We then move into the general budget. We have Pittsburgh Public Schools and Mont梭tuset Regional Vocational Technical School. First up, we'll have Pittsburgh Public Schools. Superintendent Ravenel. Councillors, we're on page forty-two of the general budget. We have a... We have a subtotal here of fifty-two million, three hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you. Good evening, councillors. Glad to be here again. As I usually do, if I may, I'd like to just read my cover letter on the budget for the community at home. Dear school committee and Pittsburgh City Council members, the 2016 budget is part of a series of Pittsburgh Public School budgets which have maintained the quality in services and programs we have developed over the past few years. Each budget decision has been based on the needs of all students in all grades. We've maintained and enhanced challenging academic initiatives, substantial technology implementation, as well as extracurricular programs for all students in all grades. We've been able to negotiate new contracts with all our bargaining units, which I believe consider our financial responsibility and respect the members of our various groups of employees. This is important as we continue to attract the best staff, teachers and administrators, to the district with a competitive salary schedule. Similarly, we have aggressively pursued opportunities to improve our technical and physical infrastructure. We have also been working with a number of vendors and acquainting ourselves with state opportunities to develop some solar energy solutions using the parking lots and roofs of some of our schools. We have had a solid trend of increasing enrollment. FY16 has seen an enrollment increase of one hundred and fifty-five students. This has been a great help in providing additional funding to the school district. This year's enrollment so far is also trending in the same way. There are a number of new positions in this budget specifically designed to address this increased enrollment and maintain a reasonable class size. Given the plethora of positive press we have received this year, I believe we are solidly a choice district for both Pittsburgh and non-Fichburg residents. I'm pleased to say that this budget does not cut positions or programs, except in cases driven by enrollment. It is built upon the guidance of our accelerated improvement plan. The Honors Academy and our collaboration with Pittsburgh State University have achieved our goal of increasing enrollment at Pittsburgh High for students looking for a challenging curriculum. For the third year in a row, we have students from St. Anthony's and St. Bernard's and Applewild entering the Honors Academy at Pittsburgh High. This year, we will be renewing our five-year honors contract with Pittsburgh State University. The McKay Arts Academy Innovative School has increased its collaborations with the Pittsburgh Art Museum and expanded its arts-integrated curriculum. We have surveyed all of our parents to assess the interest in more after-school programs. Based on these results, we will be developing some additional after-school opportunities. We have also completed our first-ever Chinese student exchange and hope to develop a robust partnership with Boston Wise to send students and faculty for this valuable cultural opportunity. Overall, I believe that this year in the Pittsburgh Public Schools are in good shape, and we look forward to a successful 2017. Thank you. And now, I'm open to any questions you may have on the budget.
My question is, can you give me the figure on what it actually costs to have a student in Pittsburgh Public School?
That would be our per pupil. So whatever the per pupil is...
It's about eleven thousand, I think eleven thousand, four hundred, somewhere around there.
Eleven thousand per hundred?
Four hundred.
Eleven thousand, four hundred.
Four hundred, eleven thousand, four hundred.
Okay, eleven thousand, four hundred. And students or pupils that are on IEPs or need additional help or services, what does that cost?
It would depend on the services. So some students have very complex services which require nursing care or different type depending on their IEP. So there's no real one amount for a special education student.
And out of that eleven thousand, four hundred dollars that it costs us, we get a little over five thousand back from the state per student? Is that how that works? Or how net school spending, how does that, the five thousand number, come into play?
That five thousand, I think you're referring to might be a school choice in or out number? No, no, it's the circuit breaker.
No, circuit breaker is different. The school choice number is around fifty-five hundred.
Okay.
So a student who comes here from another school district, we receive fifty-five hundred for that student.
Okay. Right, and an outgoing student, same follow... That money follows them no matter where they go.
Correct, right.
But what makes up, what makes up the six thousand dollar difference? If it costs us eleven thousand, four hundred dollars baseline for education per student, and we're only receiving, or we would only receive or give away fifty-five hundred, where does the other six thousand dollars, who makes that up? Or how do we make that up? You told me that it costs eleven thousand, four hundred dollars...
When you take the total foundation budget of sixty-four million dollars here, let's go back to the section on net school spending, you divide it by the number of students, that comes out to around eleven thousand, four hundred. I don't have the per pupil, but I've done it.
Okay.
So the, I'm trying to understand where you're going with the question.
I'm just trying to figure out if we are, if we're budgeting enough money to educate our students.
So our allocation is a little over eleven thousand, that's per pupil.
Okay.
So that per pupil multiplied by the numbers, we get a certain amount from the state. And then whatever the state does not provide, they provide what is it, eighty-three percent now? What's the percentage from the state?
For, from the state is about seventy-three percent of our foundation budget.
Seventy-three percent. So we get that, and then the city provides the additional amount.
All right.
And that's based on, it's not based on the fifty-five hundred, it's based on the per pupil amount.
Okay, which is a little, do you ever take eleven thousand?
Which is eleven, eleven-four.
Okay, all right.
Right.
So again, wanting to add, you know, more after-school programs, you know, that costs money, so I'm just, in my mind, trying to do quick math to find out if, if we're, if we're in a good spot to take care of all of our students with needs, with additional needs.
I think that we're, the fact that we're bringing forward a balanced budget should tell you right away we're in a good spot. Because we're not in a deficit budget, which we have been in other years where we've had to make cuts. So the amount of students that we have, that hundred and fifty-five students was a huge boost to our budget. And right now, we're running about another hundred additional, which would then play into the following school year. We cover a lot of the special education costs, but the mayor mentioned circuit breaker. There is an additional component of money that's available from the state for, if you go over a certain amount for a special education student, then you apply for the circuit breaker, and that money comes into our budget to help supplant, no, it's plant, but to help fill out the additional amount needed for special education students who are budgeted over.
If I could maybe, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the package in Section Five, we have about, I don't know, five, four or five pages on special education and the funding for in-state, or in-state, in-district students who either go to collaboratives or to, or go out of the city for tuitions. So, and that money, that table provides a more detailed breakdown of the sources as well, in terms of circuit breaker and what we're carrying over from circuit breaker, in addition to grant money that's not in the city budget. And just to be clear, on that, in that table, the only two line items that are included in the city budget are the private tuition and the collaborative. The circuit breaker is a separate, direct funding to us, and we're allowed to carry over some amount of circuit breaker from year to year. And again, then there's the IDA grant, which is federal grant for special education. So that's, that's separate from what the council votes on.
Okay, so the circuit breaker would be used as a bridge or a gap between what additional service may not be covered?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
And for example, in that graph, it shows you what our sped costs have been from FY12 to, and then are projected for FY17. So for example, if you look at private tuitions, this year, our private tuition, sped tuitions were over three million dollars, three million, two. Next year, we're projecting private tuitions to be two point seven.
Okay.
So that area, right now, we're projecting that to go down, and all of that is driven by enrollment. Who comes in, who goes out, what are their needs? You have families who move into Pittsburgh who might have a student who is in an outside placement already. That student may never actually step foot in Pittsburgh, but the cost of that student comes to the school department.
All right, and then I do have a follow-up on the busing for out-of-city students that their parents don't reside here, but we're busing students here to our school district? No?
No. Anyone who doesn't reside in Pittsburgh, who is here on school choice, they have to provide the transportation themselves. So we don't provide busing to anyone out, out of the district to here unless they're homeless, and that's where the McKinney-Vento money helps to subsidize the busing. So if someone lived in Pittsburgh and was in the Pittsburgh schools, and they went and moved somewhere else, McKinney-Vento allows them to continue to attend the Pittsburgh Public Schools, so as not to disrupt their education. And there is McKinney-Vento money available to help subsidize that transportation.
Subsidized, but it doesn't pay for completely that? How, how much do we spend on that for those, that particular group of students?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. Right.
Is it significant?
That's not a number that I, you know, was prepared to, you know, to present.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And whether it's, again, that's driven by enrollment, so you could have, you know, a hundred McKinney-Vento students, you could have two hundred McKinney-Vento students, and it can change from week to week.
Right, well, I'm hoping that the hundred and fifty-five new students aren't McKinney-Vento.
No.
I think that that costs us money.
No, they're, they're Pittsburgh Public School students.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
And that brought in a lot of additional Chapter Seventy money, you know, over a million, about a million, two. So we received an additional million, two, from the state based on that increased enrollment. The year before, we only had nine additional students and received, I think it was around two hundred thousand, maybe it was even less than that.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Bochman. Let me go back to you. Students coming in. Last year, we had a thing where for every student that came in, two students left. Did the ratio change?
No, it's about the same.
It's the same?
Yeah.
Go back here.
It's been like that pretty much the eleven years I've been here.
Is that right?
Yeah.
All right. Now, the other thing, I know the council president's gonna say something here, but I'm an advocate, and I keep on talking about it every year, you stand in front of us and every year we sit down here, I'm an advocate of skills, very much so, and I really think that we are letting the youth of our, youth of our city down. Not every student's going to college from Pittsburgh High. Monty Tech can only take so many, and that's it. And if you read the paper, like I like reading the papers, skilled people get jobs. Unskilled people don't get jobs, and they end up working for manpower or workaday programs when they make minimal wage and they get treated wrong. We gotta help the kids that don't go to college and get them skills. Now, you talk to me about Job Corps. I'm not a fan of Job Corps. Never have been, and I don't like Job Corps. I think we, you as educational people, and you got after-school programs, should look into programs where kids can go to Monty Tech and learn some skills, or Pittsburgh State University and learn some skills, or even Monty Tech, and learn some skills after, after school. I don't really think we're doing enough. We're a poor community. We're a poor community, and we're not raising the skills of the people to make a better living. We're keeping them flat, cold, sane. That's how I see it, and this is why we're poor, because they get no skills. And I go around and I try for a job, and I see in the skilled people, I mean, jobs that people are applying for, and they're minimum paying jobs of eight, nine, ten dollars an hour. Can't make a living, and they can't stop for ice cream. So when I walk around my neighborhood and I see this, it breaks my heart, and I feel bad for them. I think you, as heads, should do a better job in helping the youth of our city to get these skills. They're in the paper. I don't make it up. The chambers there, talk to them. They're looking for all kinds of help, and they wanna train them. But we're not doing it, we're not taking advantage, and I don't know why.
Well, I can take a few minutes to explain to you why. There are some very strict rules about what a comprehensive high school can provide. And I'm actually on a statewide task force with Dr. Harity on CTE programs and additional vocational programs. I was on a task force a year before. But if there's a program that's being offered at Monty Tech, we are not allowed to offer that program at Pittsburgh High School. We're not allowed to do that. So what we have to do is try to develop other kinds of programs, which is why I'm on that task force. I also did a, a tour of at least three manufacturers. I think the mayor was on that tour. I don't know if any other city councillors was on that tour, but with Roy Nasimiento, we went to three local businesses, and we're learning about what are some of the skills that we could teach at Pittsburgh High School in order to provide a workforce for those programs. Last summer, with Dr. Harity, we had our first-ever collaboration where we sent fifty students from Pittsburgh Public Schools to be part of a cybersecurity camp for two weeks. Because learning cybersecurity is something that I actually, we actually can teach at Pittsburgh High School, and it's one of the largest, fastest-growing job markets right now for students coming out of, even coming out of high school. So there are a lot of limitations from what I can and cannot do. And then also, in terms of manufacturing and other works, those are very heavily equipment-oriented. You need very specific kinds of machinery and equipment, which we don't even have space for at Pittsburgh High School. So with that task force, working collaboratively with both Dr. Harity and other people in the state, we're trying to identify what are the job programs that we're allowed to offer, and then what would it take to provide the resources and the funding to offer that? But by law, we're a comprehensive high school. By the state, we are not in a position to offer the same programs that are offered at Monty Tech or at any other vocational school. Now, if anyone would like to work with the legislature to change that and to create a different opportunity, that's what it would take, because the regulations don't allow it.
Okay, I understand you. One more question. This goes back to 2010. I brought it up numerous times. There was a poll taken in 2010, your name's on it, and it says seventy-one percent of the people that speak Spanish want, wanted school uniforms. Seventy-one percent. Fifty, fifty-three percent of parents, those of English-speaking people, wanted school uniforms. As a city that takes a survey, as it's...
Counselor...
Well, this is a question that, in regards to...
This is not a, this is not a, an item that appears on the budget in any way, shape or form. Now, I know, you know, I'm sure the school committee would be happy to engage in a conversation, but this would be more of a forum for the school committee than it would be for city council to engage over school uniforms.
Well, since the doctor's here, I think you gotta address the issue, because the people of Pittsburgh would like to know, because the other ones that ask me to keep on asking this question every year. And I'm not, I'm not gonna go and knock on every thinking door throughout the city to tell them, well, he's right here, and he can explain it, sir.
Counselor Bochman, the warrant for the meeting is with regards to the budget. I don't see this item pertaining to the budget. I'd be happy to work with you afterwards to see how we might be able to identify the correct avenue to introduce this question, perhaps to the school committee.
Well, I disagree with you. That's what the whole budget is about, to ask these kind of questions. It's all right, sir.
Counselor Caddy. Counselor Joseph.
Just a clarification on Counselor Green's earlier question. We, it costs us five thousand dollars for a student that leaves the district, even though, even though our per pupil is eleven thousand, and we only receive five thousand for each student, even though our per pupil is eleven thousand?
It's not what it costs us, it's what the state has, the state has identified that number, so whether people are coming or going, and whether you're the receiving or the sending district, that's the number you receive.
So if we take somebody in, we foot six thousand dollars of their education?
Yes, yeah.
If we send somebody out, we only foot five thousand of their education?
If we don't take anyone in, we just keep footing the, the cost of people that are, that are leaving, and there's no end. We don't get any additional, but when we, when our enrollment goes up, and you can maybe explain this a little bit more clearly, I think that, that enrollment factors in two ways. It factors with the school choice, that's one of the ways, but then we also get additional funds by the increased enrollment. So the increased enrollment is a different number than the school choice in or out. But if only, if we only allow school choice to go out, there's only a loss margin and there's no gain margin. And as Counselor Bochman or someone said, the, the amount going out is twice the amount coming in. And that, we have been able to stabilize, because that number was increasing. The outs were increasing.
Okay.
Also, Counselor... Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you. You may have said it, and I might not have heard you, but I'm trying to find out what Counselor Green is getting at. The eleven thousand, four hundred is the per pupil? What is the, the city contribution? Not exactly, roughly.
Well, you'd have to, if you looked at the whole budget, the city contribution is, if the state is contributing seventy-three percent to our budget, then the city contribution to the whole budget is twenty-seven percent.
All right, so it's twenty-seven, per pupil is twenty-seven percent of eleven-four.
So if you, if that's the simpler way to do it, that we have a full budget that's a city budget. Of that city budget, the state gives us seventy-three percent.
Okay. I mean, my, my, my point is, we've had housing programs in the city that are preserving what I call tax liabilities, when some people think it's a tax base. And they say residential development does not pay, and if the house, a single-family house, if it has one child in it, barely pays for one. If it has two, it's, it's a liability, not a, not an asset. And my, I'm just trying to point out to city leaders, we've had programs for forty years that's not letting Pittsburgh progress. Not just, and it's, it's a distraction to the whole city and perhaps the school system too. Thank you.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. I always ask about net school spending. Where are we this year as far as net, net spending and...
Right at it.
Right at it?
Right at it.
That's great. I mean, you know how, how tough it is to, I mean, nail down all the things that you use during the year. So that, that's wonderful that it's down.
And I think this is actually the first time I can remember that the day we sat here, we were at net school spending.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Last year, we were about five hundred thousand short. There were additional appropriations during the year, but at the time of the budget, we were not at net school spending. Today, at this evening's budget, we are at net school spending.
So what net, with the net spending, you just can't dip in any old time, you know, they need books, they need...
You can't dip into that and bring it out, can you? Once it's, once it's net school spending, it's put aside? Net school spending is our full budget. So when, when we bring a budget here, we've balanced our costs with that number of fifty-two million...
Three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand. So everything in here, whether it's transportation, or utilities, or whatever, is inserted into that fifty-two million, three hundred thousand. Now, interestingly enough, the things you mentioned, we actually pay for all of our books and materials out of school choice money. We removed that from the net school spending budget, I wanna say about five years ago during a really terrible budget year, where we had already made, you know, I think thirty staffing cuts. So that, that's where all those materials and all of our technology and, you know, in all of this shows all the investments we've made in books, resources, technology, you know, all of those different areas.
What was the difference, Andre, between net school spending this year and trying to get net school spending from previous years?
I, I think that the additional enrollment helped immensely. You know, that additional enrollment of a hundred and fifty-five students put a one-point-two million dollars on the state books that was coming to Pittsburgh for schools.
Close to one point seven.
So one point seven.
And most of that went to net school spending?
Well, I think, I think all of it, right?
Yeah, all of it, yeah. It's Chapter Seventy funds.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All of that additional. So all, you know, the, the money for negotiating contracts and the increase in, in health costs, you know, or any of those things, that one point seven million is what really allowed us to be able to balance the budget and come here with a balanced budget that fit within the net school spending amount.
That's great. Thank you.
Any further questions from councillors regarding the Pittsburgh Public School budget? Seeing none, thank you. Gentlemen, appreciate your time. Next, we'll move to Mont梭tuset Regional Vocational Technical School, also on page We have a subtotal of one million, nine hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars. Good evening.
Good evening.
Councillors, we'll have a, I believe, a brief presentation on some of the information that is in your, the packets that you received, as well as the PowerPoint presentation that we received last week. I just ask once again, the councillors restrict their line of questioning and comments to either specific line items or subtotal line items. If we have specific questions about general operations and the educational opportunities that Mont梭tuset provides, I'd be happy to work with them at another time to schedule a more in-depth presentation on their educational offerings.
Sure.
Thank you.
So what you're receiving right now is the... Thank you. And thank you for inviting us. We're thrilled to be here to talk about Monty Tech and what's happening at our school. A few really nice things that have happened over the year and what we're looking forward to next year. We partnered with Workers Credit Union, and we actually created the seventeenth Full Service Bank right in our foyer. It's directly connected to our business tech pathway. So our students actually, our juniors and seniors are getting trained as bank tellers and working at our school bank. Two juniors, two seniors, and our seniors just got employed full-time by Workers Credit Union, which we're thrilled. The president of the bank is really supporting our school, and not only does he want to create a teller's pipeline, but also in addition, other various jobs within the, the banking industry. We're also working with Mount Mont梭tuset, and our faculty is talking with the Mount to talk about embedding either one to two years, freshman or sophomore year of an associate's degree with the business program embedded into the high school during the day for our students, so they'd be graduating with a high school diploma as well as college credits. Another feature I'd like to highlight, in our health program, we actually wrote several grants and purchased a simulator, a sim man and a sim junior. They're just like regular mannequins, but they're fully electronic, so as a student learns how to diagnose and treat, as they start treating the, the victim, the victim reacts based on whether the treatment is correct or not, and it's truly state-of-the-art, and we're thrilled that we wrote several grants for that. We also partnered with the Mount and embedded an EMT course for our seniors in the health program, so they can sit for the certification and receive eight college credits free of charge to the students. So if you're a health student, you're graduating with a high school diploma, EMT certification, as long as you pass in the national exam, CPR first aid, home health aid, medical terminology, and CNA, so very productive. We also are working with many people in the community. I'm so happy with the generosity and, of people that really collaborate and support one another. And we came up with a, an idea to build a vet tech clinic. And we wanted to start the vet tech program because there's certainly a workforce need out there. We talked with the various advisors that own, the veterinary doctors that own clinics in all of North Central Mass. And we looked at the workforce pipeline, and the demands in this area are high, as well as high in Central Mass and at the state and national level. And we went out and started soliciting funds. We didn't wanna go back to the communities and ask for additional dollars. And I'm really proud to say, in Phase One, the estimated projection for the construction would be about two point two million, and right now, we have two point one million dollars that we've raised from foundations, donations, public sector, private sector donations, and in-kind from Monty Tech. We need about a half million... We need about a half million dollars for the equipment, and we're thrilled to say that we wrote a grant from the governor's office, and $136,000 is getting picked up by the governor's vocational grant and some other additional grants. So right now, we're just short about 50,000 or less for that component. And the goal is to actually do the demo and foundation over the summer, and our own construction students are going to build the 7,500-square-foot veterinary clinic right there on our campus at Monty Tech. We're partnering with Becker College and Tufts University. They're going to give us, Becker's given us their veterinary doctor at the tune of $100,000 a year, free of charge. And we're going to open the clinic up for families in all of Monty Tech's region that can't afford proper animal care, so that they can receive the care that their family pet deserves and certainly they need. So huge win-win-win. Our students will actually earn six college credits from Becker. We're talking with the Mount right now. They're thinking about, they've gone through a full study to see if an associate's degree is worthwhile, which they're moving ahead to start a program. And we're going to open the clinic up, once our construction students build it, we're going to open the clinic up in about three years from now. So one year of construction. We also surveyed our middle school students that were touring through, and almost one out of every two student was interested in some type of veterinary science, which certainly supports the STEM industry with workforce development. So those are some of the few highlights that I wanted to share with you, that exciting things that are happening at Monty Tech.
Any questions from counselors? Counselor Clark.
I think the last time you were here... You talked about stabilization fund for the school. Where are you with that right now?
We currently have $65,000 in the account. And in our FY '17 budget, we're proposing putting 40,000 more into it.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Green.
On page 27 of your report, you've broken down per pupil spending. So FY '12 was 17,000 and change, FY '14, 18,000 and change. Where are we now per pupil spending?
So we're actually, in FY '15, we're actually down than FY '14. We are at... These numbers are calculated by the state based on our average FTEs and based on all funds. So I just want to, I'd point that out, so it's using grant funds, athletic funds, all funds. But as of FY '15, which are the last numbers published by the state, we're down to 18,275. And again, so when we talk, when we compare foundation budget, which is the basis for our budget, those numbers are 15,322. The 18 brings into the amount that we spend from grants, revolving, special revenue funds, et cetera.
All right. And are you currently at about 400 enrollment? Where are you in enrollment?
For Pittsburgh? 418 is your foundation enrollment number for October 1st.
Is that number up?
That number is up. It is up six pupils, and I'm happy to report your assessment is down 2,500.
Okay.
With those six extra pupils.
All right. Thank you very much.
Further questions from counselors? Seeing none, we'll... Counselor Caddy.
Is it true the new animal clinic will be built where the tennis courts are?
Yes.
So you're going to lose the tennis courts?
Yes, we don't have a tennis team.
I play there a lot.
Yes.
I'm very disappointed.
Pittsburgh High School has tennis courts.
Any further questions from counselors? Seeing none, we'll conclude the presentation from Monty Tech.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
That concludes our general presentations and hearings from departments. Should we start with that? Perhaps we should start with that first. Counselors, you should have received a communication dated May 26. I'll read this. Dear Honorable Counselors, after giving further consideration to the budget adjustment proposed within the building personal services accounts by the building commissioner, we have confirmed with the Department of Revenue that it is acceptable for the city to adjust line item changes within the budget level category as proposed by the mayor. Accordingly, I respectfully requesting your approval to adjust line items within the building personal services account as follows. Building personal services overtime reduced by 9,000 to a total, subtotal of $4,000. Sick leave buyback reduced by 10,000 to $0. And then in that place, principal clerk stenographer part-time increased by $19,000. Thank you very much for your consideration. Regards, Stephen L. Dina Tally, Mayor. Counselors, I thought that would give us an opportunity to ask questions regarding that communication before we then move into proposed, any final proposed reductions and ultimately taking action. Counselor Caddy.
Is there a job description on a principal clerk stenographer?
There is.
There is? Could we get a copy of that?
Perhaps would you be able to give an overview, Mr. Mayor, of what this position?
The position was required for assistance with the zoning board. That person has a 19-hour employee, well, is actually a former city employee, who's retired, with extensive amount of experience with zoning. It became burdensome for the department to maintain the full-time person who's pursuing the issues that meet on a daily basis with the building department and to also be the stenographer and dealing with some of the other issues that we're looking at. Certainly, the city solicitor and the chief of staff, we're looking at a way to even streamline that process more. Zoning board is constantly backed up with issues, and zoning board meetings run much too late. And I think we need, we need to have one person focused on zoning issues that we've ruled on months ago to determine whether or not those individuals that own the property are meeting those requirements. We put restrictions on them, but no one's following through to see if those restrictions have been met. So what are we calling that, Vinny? An administrator?
A zoning administrator.
A zoning administrator. And that would be someone who is currently within the building department. I'm hoping to utilize a building inspector to do...
So it won't be this person?
No, it won't be this person.
May I add?
Well, it could be this person, but I'm not sure that person would have the time to do that.
But it would, may I add? Just for clarification, this person is someone who historically has done the minutes, attended the meetings, and operated the mailings and prepared the decisions and the minutes of each of the meetings. In addition to that, we're looking for this person to be a facilitator, a multiplier, if you will, of your current staff in your building department, so that this person could prepare and draft concerns for violations of conditions that are on previous zoning decisions that aren't necessarily being followed up, because it is cumbersome for the building department to stop the building inspections and then switch gears and to go into zoning enforcement, if you will. However, if we can have the, some communication between the zoning board and your building commissioner and some administrative prep work, if you will, demand letters, so on and so forth, prepared, it's going to streamline the process, as the mayor was saying. And that's what the mayor's been focused in on that. Some of our zoning board meetings, as the mayor's concerned about, we have citizens there until 12 o'clock at night. And a lot of the reason for that, Counselor, is the, is the zoning board's intention to hold on to matters and continue bringing your citizens in for reviews of conditions because of some of the lack, of what they've seen to be lack of enforcement. So we think that this is going to hopefully make a big dent, if not solve that problem for us. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Further questions from counselors? Counselors, we should have a vote on whether or not to accept this recommendation. We've already discussed building and its budget on page 36 and 37, but this will ultimately impact our, our final vote later on this evening. And also potentially, if we did not, chose not to take action on this, it would require a supplemental...
Make a motion to accept the...
Start.
I have a motion.
Letter from the mayor voted, sent May 26th.
Thank you.
I have a motion and second to accept the mayor's recommendations for the building department FY '17. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous? Excellent. Counsel, moving back to the agenda, begin with the... Would you like me to read that, or do you typically read that?
No, you can do it.
Okay. Counselor, I'll begin by reading the proposed recommendations, beginning with assessor. The original amount, 7,000. A proposed reduction by Counselor Tran of $2,000. New proposed amount of $5,000. Travel and meetings, 3,000. Would you typically take a vote after each one? Okay. Counsel, I can read through this, or we could take action after each individual.
Do they do them one at a time, or five each, five each department?
We can do these one at a time and move through them. So we'll, again, that's office supplies, original amount 7,000, proposed reduction of 2,000, to a new proposed amount of 5,000. Do I have a...
Motion to accept the proposed new amount of $5,000.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the proposed reduction by $2,000 to office supplies. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Donnelly.
I just find it odd, 112,944 plus the adjustment that the first department, the department that sets the values and brings in the money, there was a first hearing, three items got cut, or suggested to be cut by one counselor, $2,900. And then the rest, there's hardly any cuts in all of the departments. I don't understand why we're picking on one department, and it just so happened to be the first department in hearings. And I'm really upset that that trivial amount of money is cut from the department that you want to set the rate to bring the money in. It sets the value, total dollars to the city. Thank you.
Counselor Dina Tally.
You know, for several years, there have been proposed cuts of this nature. I chief among them. While I understand what the counselor is saying, there is nothing but speculation as to his comments. Only the counselor who proposed the cuts can speak on why he chose to do this. But in looking at the information provided, the cuts would make sense if counselors were to go that way. I understand it's trivial, and I understand we didn't do it across the board. I have my own reasons for not doing it, which I'll make known later. But I agree the 600, I agree that it may come across as trivial, but I, we've done this before. I don't think if you make cuts in one area, that means you have to make cuts everywhere. But I won't speak for the person who made the decision, who made the recommendation, which is all this is. It may not pass. Thank you.
Counselor Tran.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't think any of the reductions made by any of the counselors in this room was made out of personal vendetta or quote-unquote picking on the department. I can't speak for the other counselors, but the reductions I made were based on the status E information that I received and compared to the spending of the last several fiscal years. If there's no need for the money, and the reductions I made were very conservative, then they're there for counselors to make the reductions. So to address what Counselor Donnelly said, I wasn't picking on a department, and it was apparent that the assessor's department was the first department that came before the council. And I made other reductions in other departments as well, and it wasn't based on picking on a department, Counselor Donnelly. Thank you.
I'll agree with Counselor Tran and Counselor Dina Tally in that, you know, I think these cuts, you know, the budget is before us, these, you know, when you see excess or money left over from year to year, and it's based on the status E and numbers coming directly out of munis, I think it's important that we look, we scrutinize, and we hold department heads accountable to use their funding and provide justifications for when they don't or why they spend more. I wouldn't begrudge a counselor for certainly proposing these cuts. I would not be in favor, because I don't believe we equitably apply the same logic across the board to all departments. And if I were to do that, I'd prefer to go through and apply that same logic to each. But I think certainly the fact that a counselor is scrutinizing these numbers, I think sends a message to department heads that their budget line items are being closely monitored, and we expect them to use their budget wisely and allocate the funds as it was intended and as we voted on this time last year. Thank you. Counselor Caddy.
What worries me about this is if you're a department head and you budgeted this amount of money, and you know that you're being watched by the council, you're going to try to spend that money by the end of the year. I think that would force our budget to go up. I think in this case, you have a department head that's being honest. He wants to put that in the budget in case it's an issue this year and he needs to spend it. But the history is, this department has been returning money every year. I can remember times where, at the end of the year, it would be a spending freezing for people to get their money spent down before the end of the year. So I just, I think we're, we could cause a problem by doing this. Thank you.
Any further, anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? I have a motion and second to reduce the office supplies of the assessor's budget by $2,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
Show of hands, please. All those opposed? The motion fails. Travel, also within the assessor's budget, travel and meetings, original amount $3,000, proposed reduction $600, proposed new amount $2,400.
Motion to accept the proposed reduction of $600.
I have a motion and second to accept the proposed reduction to travel and meetings of the assessor's office by $600. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Show of hands, please, counselors. Three. All those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion fails. Travel and state of the assessor's, original amount $3,600, proposed reduction $300, proposed new amount $3,300.
Motion to accept the $300 proposed reduction.
I have a motion and second to accept the proposed reduction of $300. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Show of hands, please. All of those opposed? Motion fails. Moving forward to miscellaneous expenditures, Johnny Appleseed Center, original amount $5,000, proposed reduction $9,000 by Counselor Joseph, proposed new amount $41,000. Counselor Joseph made a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve a proposed reduction of $9,000 to the Johnny Appleseed Center. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Joseph.
I guess I just want to make the point that overall, this budget is increased by two... two point seven million dollars plus, with local receipts, not counting anything to do with schools. Then we have nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, as reported by the chamber, additional room revenue tax, which is probably eight hundred and eighty to thousand dollars more than it was the previous year from Great Wolf's. Okay? And we, instead of that money going towards helping the city, we've just put it into another problem with the city. We've just continued to spend it, okay? Instead of putting it towards OPEB like we thought we were going to, or putting money aside to do something, we've hired an additional officer, we've hired an additional proposing, an additional person for DPW. I mean, we've just, instead of taking away from the problem of, that we have for liabilities, we've added to it, and we've basically taken the other eight hundred thousand dollars and just sent it away to cause us to have more liability. So again, my nine thousand originally was, as a budget reduction, to put that money into our own person that's doing the economic developments budget, which I think her budget had four, four thousand dollars, or something like that, maybe nine thousand. But I just thought that instead of continuing to spend money that we have for more people and more liability, that we could actually save some money and put it towards our own economic development. But that was just my reasoning.
Councillor Jeanette Ali.
For eight years, I have had to see budgets come before me that have been unbalanced, where the mayor reduced services significantly in two thousand and nine, some of it needlessly. Our bond rating was near junk, and I have to hear every day now for the rest of my life how the city was turned around. The city was not turned around, okay? Because whoever the mayor was would have to do what happened, because the DOR was going to put us in receivership if we didn't. And the council at that time was complicit as well, because it takes more than the mayor to take money out of stabilization. Be that as it said, the nine thousand dollars being taken out as a protest, or as a message because of our unfunded liabilities, I'm glad that some of us are now talking about it. I've been talking about it since two thousand and eight. This is not how you address it. I have significant problems with this budget, like the other eight, but this one's got some improvements. It's got a long way to go, but the nine thousand I disagree with, because the Economic Development Director did state that she was in favor of this. We had a commitment from the chamber, a commitment that we have not gotten since I've been on here. And I don't think cutting nine thousand and putting it back into the city is going to fix the things that councillor Joseph talked about. We have a hundred and twenty-eight million dollar unfunded liability in OPEB. We put two fifty in the trust fund to shut everybody here up who was angry about it. And then we never saw the money, no more money is going in there. Hopefully, that'll change itself. It took the previous administration eight years to do that. And then our pension liability has skyrocketed, okay? No one talks about the pension liability, because the state's making us pay for that. The revenues we're collecting every year in added taxation. He is correct, we are spending it. Why are we spending it? Because we don't have the money to do what we're doing right now. We haven't for over a decade. So when your pension liability goes up by six hundred thousand dollars a year, in perpetuity for the next twenty years, mind you, that's a guarantee, and your health insurance goes up three to four hundred thousand, that's a million bucks. That's your entire prop two and a half increase. So whenever anybody gets their tax bill and it's been up, increased, hundred percent of that increase is going to employee benefits for the next twenty years. It's not going to added services. So the city, and I said this last year too, the city can afford to not spend what they get for revenue, unfortunately, because we don't have the money right now. We are too busy paying down unfunded liabilities. And this is not going to change that. This is a, this is point zero 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 ten percent, one percent of the whole problem. You know, everybody's giving themselves a pat on the back last year about OPEB going down to one twenty-eight, but no one talked about the fact the pensions went up ten million. And that's what we really have to pay for. So this isn't going to do anything, all right? If people want to get serious, there either has to be massive cuts across the board, or you've got to phase out overlay surplus and all of this other jazz we've been doing, or you get new revenues through growth, which there hasn't been any in the last eight years. So maybe this new adminis, see, when the previous mayor was elected, I gave her a lot of leeway her first term, because she entered a snake pit, okay?
Councillor?
And in this case...
I ask you to keep this on point.
I'm giving this one a short leash too. So, I mean, nine thousand cut out of Johnny Appleseed Center, if people are going to put their flags in the ground on this, where the heck have people been eight years ago? This is what we're going to stand on? Thank you.
Councillor Tran.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I find it pretty interesting and intriguing to me that I just heard that this is a spending budget, which I agree with, it's a spending budget, and that we're spending all our revenue, but yet I made some very, very small reductions, and none of them passed. So what is it? Do we want to spend? Or do we want to conserve some kind of money in the budget? And if three hundred dollars couldn't pass on a reduction motion, do we even want to waste time with any of these items on the reduction spreadsheet? Any of them going to pass? Thank you.
Councillor Donnelly.
Thank you. I'm just, I just want to see, anything that's good happens in Pittsburgh is marketed. And I think that the nine hundred thou, almost a nine hundred thousand dollar increase that came from tourism, strictly tourism, which is a major industry in many communities, finally, Pittsburgh, go from forty-seven thousand to nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, I think we should pour some of that money back in as best we can for tourism in Pittsburgh. And I know it's a small reduction, I know it's a substantial increase to Johnny Appleseed. It's the only venue for tourism in the area, and I think we should support it. And I, I'm not happy that we're the ones that contribute the most, but fortunately, for the first time in the history of Pittsburgh, we have the most money coming in. If you took all the tourism, all the money from room tax, from everybody else, we still have the most. And the projections are, they will have more next year, a little more, more than everybody else. I just say, please, support tourism, support marketing Pittsburgh.
Councillor Joseph.
And I guess I just want to continue to say that I consider the additional room tax to be a one-time revenue. And I know that it's, it looks like it's going to be there for a long time, but we don't know, it's just like the incinerator was there for a long time, okay? And eventually, the incinerator went out, and we didn't do any improvements to wastewater, and we just went, we just made that money part of our operating budget, and we went through it. So I'm just saying that I thought, as a city, that we were going to get a little bit smarter in how we were going to use the room tax revenue, and use it more as a one-time revenue, because next year, that revenue could be cut in half, that next year, that room could be doubled, next year, that money could go away. You don't know exactly what's going to happen. I mean, we've seen that hotel rise and fall, okay? And right now, it's risen to a great expectation. Thankful for them for what they do. But I just thought, I was just under the impression that as a city, we were going to use that money as one-time revenue, and not use it as part of our operating budget. And that's what, basically, it just got sucked right into the operating budget. So I guess it's just, it's just a disappointment, I'm sorry.
Councillor Joseph, I'd contend that this is, this is in turn, a one-time expense by the city into Johnny Appleseed, if it so chooses. We're under no obligation, in terms of manpower, resources, or benefits, for us to continue a line of funding beyond this year. If at any time, we as a city feel that it's no longer working, or it's a unsustainable investment in marketing, we can certainly pull back at any time. I think to councillor Donnelly's point of, there's plenty of bad news if we so chose to focus on in Pittsburgh, and we have to work twice as hard to broadcast our successes as a city. And, you know, we don't have a marketing professional in the city, and I'm not necessarily advocating that we add more liability, more to our liabilities by adding additional personnel. But I think where we can, where we can fund additional marketing opportunities and tourism opportunities for our city, we should, we should do so. I view it as an investment in the long term. If we can, if we can do so wisely, if we can market ourselves wisely, and eventually attract businesses or tourists to generate revenue, this hopefully becomes a somewhat sustainable model. You know, ultimately, I don't think that we're wedded to this approach in the long term, that we're locked in, but I think a piece that was certainly attractive to me is a couple, for the past couple of years, we've given the Chamber of Commerce and Johnny Appleseed a hard time, saying, why are we contributing more than others, and how come other communities have not been engaged? For the first time in a long time, they've come to us and said, we listen to you closely, we engaged other communities, we've been successful in getting other communities to come on board, and they're engaging in meaningful discussions, and I feel like haven't happened in a long time. So I feel like, you know, they're listening to us, that they're saying, we want to be part of a regional approach, and if we're going to be the sole funders, then, you know, we're not interested. But I think we're looking at a regional approach to tourism, and I think, you know, in some senses, it's paid off, and we should continue to see where this investment can take us. Thank you. Councillor Bochman.
I'm calling for councillor Joseph over there. I want to say something, though. Nobody has ever come to me, to this council, and shown us what Johnny Appleseed and their projected income for this area, to us, to show us. I watch TV, watch Channel Five, Channel Seven, Channel Nine, Channel Thirty-eight, and I see the ads on the, it doesn't say Johnny Appleseed, it says, come to Water Park, Central Mass. Doesn't say anything about Johnny Appleseed. I want to know how Johnny Appleseed inspires Pittsburgh. How did it help any businesses besides that? But I don't say Johnny Appleseed helped them, I say the ads on TV helped Great Wolf come in. Because I watch TV at night, and I see their ads, and they don't say Pittsburgh, and they don't say Johnny Appleseed, all they say is Central Massachusetts. So I think, personally, I think those ads brought in the tourists. That's my opinion. I don't want to give them another eighteen thousand, or nine thousand.
Councillor Caddy? Did I miss you?
Just quickly, I'm probably a hard sell on Johnny Appleseed, but the presentation that the chamber gave us, and then the, what the mayor said, I'm going to trust in the mayor, I'm going to trust in the chamber, that they're going to do something to promote Pittsburgh. We're lucky we have the income coming in this year with the rooms tax. I don't know what the percentage is of fifty thousand dollars is, but it's, I'm a hard seller, I'm going to support this. I think it's something that we should, we should give them a shot. I think I've seen a big change in the attitude, and I hope it works out for them and the city.
Councillor Green.
Well, I'm probably one of the biggest cheerleaders for the Johnny Appleseed Plaza, and for the work that they do, because for a first time in a long time, we actually are engaged with partnership with the chamber, and I think there is a benefit in that. And if you've ever stopped at the Johnny Appleseed Center, what I would suggest, if you are a business owner in Pittsburgh, that you go with your brochures to display there at Johnny Appleseed Center, because they get an incredible, incredible amount of traffic. And it is not, it's not their responsibility to take care of our businesses in Pittsburgh. It's our responsibility to take care of our businesses. So if you have a business and you want it promoted, Johnny Appleseed Center would certainly be a place to do that, as well as the chamber office. So they're, you know, they're asking for fifty thousand, I want to trust that the return on investment for that small amount of fifty thousand dollars will be incredible. Thank you.
Any other councillors wishing to speak to the motion? We have a motion and second on the floor for a proposed reduction of nine thousand dollars to the Johnny Appleseed Center. All those in favor? All those opposed? One in opposition?
Opposition. The way you said in favor, I thought it was in favor of keeping...
So one in favor and the remainder opposed? The motion fails. Councillor, did I, did I miss you as well? Did you...
Yeah, you missed me too, because I was with councillor Joseph.
Two, two for the proposed reduction, and the remainder against. Moving forward to police, beginning with civilian police dispatch overtime, original amount, forty thousand, proposed reduction of twenty thousand dollars by councillor Joseph, proposed new amount of twenty thousand dollars.
I'll remove the proposal with a statement. I just want to say that I think that as a city, we give out overtime like candy, in every department. I can understand where it's required by police, where they have to do court work and other work, but I really think that we should task our department heads, when they are authorizing a minute of overtime, that they ask themselves if that is really required, or if that money could be best not spent, okay? So I'm not advocating that we cut this twenty thousand, or the other one, but down below by thirty-seven fifty. I just want to say that I think that we should task our department heads to look at every minute of overtime, and find out just how much of that people consider as a perk or a right, as opposed to what we actually need as a city to spend. That's all I want to say. I'll leave, take that off the table.
We'll move then on to overtime animal control, original amount of fifteen thousand dollars, a proposed reduction of three thousand dollars by councillor Tran, to a proposed new amount of twelve thousand dollars.
Motion to accept the proposed reduction of three thousand dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the overtime animal control proposed reduction of three thousand dollars. Speaking to the motion, councillor Tran.
Mr. President, unlike the reduction for the overtime item that was before this one, this request is based on status E data. There hasn't been any year that the overtime has been over twelve thousand dollars, and I made the reduction based on concrete data, supporting data. Thank you.
Any other councillors wishing to speak to the motion? We have a motion and second for a proposed reduction of three thousand dollars to the animal overtime control. All those in favor? Hands up, please. Keep them up. And councillor motion. All those opposed? Six to three. Motion passes. Moving on to building, sick time buyback. We already moved, we already moved on that item. Apologies, councillors, that that item and overtime has already been taken care of through an earlier motion. We'll then move on to automobile, original amount, ten thousand dollars, proposed reduction of four thousand dollars by councillor Jeanette Ali, to a proposed new amount of six thousand dollars.
Motion to accept the four thousand dollar reduction.
I have a motion and second to accept the four thousand dollar reduction. Speaking to the motion, councillor Jeanette Ali.
This proposal I made, because it just, it just jumped out at me so, it was so glaringly apparent. We bought new vehicles for this department, I want to say, two years ago, three brand-new trucks. And as a result, the expenses have gone down considerably, as one would expect, and the budget is for the same amount. Building commissioner didn't give me any reasons why this shouldn't be done, because if there were any major problems with our new vehicles that we've had in the field for two years, I wouldn't do this, but I just don't see a need, because we have new vehicles, which, the point of the new vehicles was to reduce our repair expenses, which it did, yet we're still paying, we're still funding the amount. For something like this, I know it's only four thousand dollars, but Mr. Lance Yanni can't use that four thousand dollars better elsewhere? I know it's within his department, but instead of going to us for a transfer or anything like that, some... like that, something like this doesn't make any sense to me. Thank you.
Counselor Donnelly. I have a motion and second to accept the proposed reduction of four thousand dollars. All those in favor? All those opposed? One in opposition? Seven to two?
Seven to two.
Are there two councilors in opposition? Councilors in favor of that? Okay, just one in opposition. The motion carries.
Eight to one.
Eight to one. We'll next move to library electricity line, original amount fifty-one thousand dollars, proposed reduction of six thousand dollars by Counselor Green, proposed new amount of forty-five thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the proposed reduction of six thousand dollars to the library electricity line. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor? Three in opposition?
In favor.
I apologize. All those opposed?
Three to six.
Three to six. The motion fails to carry. Next move to airport overtime, original amount seven thousand five hundred dollars, proposed reduction of three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars by Counselor Joseph, for a proposed new amount of three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I've already made my statement, so I'll remove that.
That has been withdrawn. We'll next move to airport administrative assistant for an original amount of fifty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars, with a proposed reduction in full to a proposed new amount of zero by Counselor Boishman.
I'm going to, on that, before I withdraw this motion, can I say something in motion?
You may.
Now, councilors, a couple of days ago, when we sat in front of me, the airport sat in front of me, and they asked about this job, and I wanted to cut, and all eyes focused on me. Here I am, an advocate to save jobs, to save jobs, but I wanted to cut here, and nobody asked the reasons why. Counselor Bezos said to me, when are you going to look up her job prescription down, descriptions of what she has to do at City Hall? I don't really care about what her job describes her to do, I want to know what she does all day. I want to know, why isn't there a log sheet telling us what the people are doing during the course of a day? I could tell you, I need Counselor Donnelly and Counselor Clark every day of the week, they're my friends, and put them on my budget. What do they do? That's all I ask. There's no log sheets, there's no nothing. There was, there was an audit taken in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. I think the councilors should read what the audit has to say, it's very interesting, what they recommend. I'm going to withdraw this, because the mayor has asked me numerous times, and he's talked to me plenty of times with Vinnie, so I'm going to withdraw this petition. But I would like to have some kind of a log system to explain to us what they are doing. When I walk into City Hall, and I go into anti, anti, her department, I see everybody working. When I go to the next window, I see everybody working. If I go to the assessors, I see everybody working. When I go to the treasures, I see everybody working. I know what they're doing. When I go out to the DPW, and I drive through the city, and I drive around like Counselor Donnelly does, and I see the people working, we know we're getting our money's worth. I do not know, and I repeat, I do not know what they are doing. There's no kind of log sheets that said, today, we accepted nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-six calls. We got no proof. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Next move, before the power fails on us apparently, to information technology, travel and training, original amount of four thousand dollars, proposed reduction of two thousand dollars by Counselor Gina Tally, for proposed new amount of two thousand dollars.
Motion to accept the proposed reduction by two thousand dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the proposed reduction of two thousand dollars to travel and training. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Gina Tally.
Again, this, this account was glaringly, was glaring, I was looking at it, never uses it, and I understand that some may feel that that mean you encourage someone to use it. My point is, when it gets cut, doesn't necessarily mean it has to leave the office. I feel this money could be better used to buy two new computers, instead of putting it into travel and meetings, reallocation resources. I'm not advocating this be cut and removed, I know the mayor has that say, not us, but the cuts of this nature is not to, not to encourage spending, it's better budget transparency. There is a need for rolling replacement of computers, not a need for travel, as evidenced by the last eight years. So I, I, I made that recommendation, and considering how extremely tough I've been on this department for many years, and what I'd really like to see happen to it, I think that this is very generous on my part, and I saved everybody here a lot of, lot of pain, because they've heard me say it now eight times. I didn't want to burden everybody with the ninth. So I say this money gets removed, and it gets allocated to buying two new computers. God knows we need it. Thank you.
Counselor, while I, I certainly appreciate you sparing us this year.
We've only had to hear it for three, so.
I got the message out there, it is.
And, and I also agree, there are probably computer systems at City Hall, we know there are computer systems at City Hall that could use refreshing. This, I felt like we did get a decent rationale for how the funds would be used differently this year ahead than they have in the past. Now, I, I certainly hope I'm not wrong in this, but I, I received an explanation that with a couple of new systems, there'd be further need for increased training for both munis, I believe the new website, among other programs, particularly in this field of information technology, training is, is as essential there as it is anywhere else, that people stay up to date and current on the newest platforms. That said, I, I, I would not be in favor of this cut, but I certainly expect that moving forward, you know, if, if travel and training are as essential as, as the manager made them to be, I would expect that those funds are used this year for those intended purposes and for those, for those new platforms. I have a motion and second to accept the proposed reduction of two thousand dollars. All those in favor? Please leave them up. All those opposed? The motion carries. We don't need six, do we? Motion carried by five to four. We don't, do we need, I don't believe we need six for these items, we need, we need, we'll need six for the final vote. Counselor Tran.
Mr. President, can you tell us the, the total amount of reductions we've made so far, voted in the affirmative? I'd like to know, because we're in danger of not even making a ten thousand dollars reduction in this budget.
Nine thousand.
Counselor, I have, is it seven thousand? Nine thousand.
Thank you.
So now we'll give, councilors will now give, do we need to give you an opportunity to crunch them?
Nine thousand left.
Understood.
One twelve, nine thirty-five?
Two eighty-two.
Is that right? One twelve, nine thirty-five?
Nine thirty-five.
Okay.
How much did?
One hundred and twelve million nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, two eighty-two.
Oh, even after.
Nine thirty-five, two eighty-two.
Councilors will then move to the, the petition, to the orders in front of us. Ninety-four, two thousand sixteen, an order, mayor's FY two thousand seventeen, operating budget, general fund, one hundred and twelve million nine hundred and thirty-five thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars. Airport, seven hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Wastewater, eleven million four hundred and forty-four thousand and twenty-five dollars. Water, five million nine hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars. I have a motion and second to accept ninety-four, two thousand and sixteen, as amended. All those in favor? All those opposed? Two and three in opposition. The motion carries. Ninety-five, two thousand sixteen, an order appropriating seven hundred thousand, same to be credited to fiscal year two thousand seventeen, tax levy and charged against overlay surplus.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and second to approve ninety-five, two thousand sixteen. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Three in opposition. Ninety-six, two thousand sixteen, an order appropriating the sum of two hundred and five thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars, same to be charged against parking meter garage receipts, and credited to fiscal year two thousand seventeen, accounts as follows, treasurer personal services, eighty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars, treasurer expenses, one hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. I have a motion and second to approve ninety-six, two thousand sixteen. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? One, two in opposition? Ninety-eight, two thousand sixteen, sorry, I apologize, ninety-seven, two thousand sixteen, carries. Ninety-eight, two thousand sixteen, an order appropriating, I apologize. Ninety-seven, sixteen, excuse me, an order, fifteen thousand, same to be charged against cemetery sale of lots and graves, and credited to fiscal year two thousand seventeen, as follows, cemetery personal services, fifteen thousand dollars. I have a motion and second to accept ninety-seven, two thousand sixteen. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Two in opposition. Motion carries. Ninety-eight, two thousand sixteen, an order appropriating seven hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars, same to be charged against airport receipts reserved, and credited to fiscal year two thousand seventeen, airport fund accounts as follows, personal services, two hundred and twenty-five thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars, expenses, five hundred and eighteen thousand three hundred and seven dollars. I have a motion and second to approve ninety-eight, two thousand sixteen. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Four in opposition? Does that carry? Do we need six? We do need six. That motion fails to reach the required.
It's five.
Oh, it is. Oh, the motion does carry. Apologies. Ninety-eight, two thousand sixteen, does indeed carry, five to four. Ninety-nine, two thousand sixteen, an order appropriating eleven million four hundred and forty-four thousand and twenty-five dollars, charging ten thousand, ten million two hundred and sixty-one thousand one hundred dollars against wastewater enterprise fund receipts, and one million one hundred and eighty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars against wastewater enterprise retained earnings, and crediting fiscal year two thousand seventeen wastewater enterprise fund accounts as follows, personal services, two million two hundred and twenty-three thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars, expenses, three million one hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred dollars, indirect costs, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, debt services, four million five hundred and twenty thousand, capital expenses, six hundred thousand dollars. I have a motion and a second to approve ninety-nine, two thousand sixteen. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Three in opposition? Motion carries. One hundred, two thousand sixteen, an order appropriating five million nine hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars, charging five million eight hundred and seventy thousand against water enterprise fund receipts, and a hundred and six thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars against water enterprise retained earnings, and crediting fiscal year two thousand seventeen, water enterprise fund accounts as follows, personal services, one million five hundred and eighty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars, expenses, one million four hundred and ten thousand dollars, indirect costs, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars, debt service, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I have a motion and second to approve one hundred, two thousand sixteen. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Three in opposition. The motion carries. One hundred and one, two thousand sixteen, an order that the city of Pittsburgh is authorized to establish the following enclosed revolving funds for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, pursuant to mass general law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three, E one, one slash two, each with a maximum annual expenditure limit of one hundred thousand dollars in accordance with specifications. I have a motion and second to approve one hundred and one, two thousand sixteen. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Two in opposition. One hundred and two, two thousand sixteen. To its third and final reading? Okay. In ordinance, amending chapter forty-four, section ten of the code of the city of Pittsburgh under positions paid hourly parks and recreation, and the recommendation that it be sent to its third and final reading. I have a motion and second to approve one oh two sixteen, and send to its third and final reading. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? The motion carries, it is unanimous. Councilors, that concludes. I have a motion to adjourn. Motion and second to adjourn, speaking to the motion, Counselor Tran.
Mr. President, I just want to thank my fellow councilors. Keep in mind, fiscal two thousand sixteen is almost over, we have one more month to go, and we haven't put anything in the stabilization fund. I've heard that we, we should anticipate putting a hundred thousand dollars into that fund, but even if we do that, that's going to be the lowest amount that we've put into that fund since two thousand and seven. So I know that it, the stabilization fund is one of the priorities that we should be focusing on, and we haven't done that yet. Thank you.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? We are adjourned. Well, next. Right, councilors, we still, we still have to convene a special meeting of the city council to, to approve. Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, May thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen. I'd like to call to order a special meeting of the Pittsburgh City Council. Counselor Dina Tally, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
President Kishmerich.
Present.
Counselor Bean. Counselor Boishman.
Yay.
Counselor Bezo. Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Here.
Counselor Donnelly.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Present.
Counselor Joseph.
Here.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Trent.
Here. This evening, a warrant for a special meeting of the city council. Special meeting of the city council will be held on Tuesday, May thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, immediately following the council's whole committee meeting, which is scheduled to begin at 6:00 PM for the purposes of the FY seventeen budget. Councillors, unless I have objections, I'll just read to spare reading the same dollar figures as I previously read, the adjournment of the council's whole committee meeting, I'll just read this specific order number, following which we can take a vote. There are objections to that methodology? Seeing none. Ninety-four, two thousand and sixteen. I have a motion and second to accept ninety-four, two thousand and sixteen. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Dina Tally.
Is this a report? Do we have to do these all individually?
We have a report, but we should, because of discrepancies in voting, it's probably best that we vote on these individually instead of as a whole.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second to accept ninety-four, two thousand and sixteen. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Please raise your hands if you're opposed. Three in opposition. Order carries. Ninety-five, two thousand and sixteen.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to accept ninety-five, two thousand sixteen. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Two in opposition. It carries. Ninety-six, two thousand and sixteen.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and second to approve ninety-six, two thousand and sixteen. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Two in opposition. Ninety-seven, two thousand and sixteen.
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept ninety-seven, two thousand sixteen. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Three in opposition. Ninety-eight, two thousand and sixteen.
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept, speaking to the motion, Counselor Donnelly.
After reconsideration on the airport, I want it to be on notice, but I'd like reconsideration for the vote.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Three in opposition. The motion carries. Ninety-nine, two thousand and sixteen.
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept ninety-nine, two thousand sixteen. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. One hundred, two thousand sixteen.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and second to accept one hundred, two thousand sixteen. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Two in opposition. One hundred and one, two thousand sixteen.
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept one hundred and one, two thousand sixteen. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Two in opposition. One hundred and two, two thousand sixteen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve and send to a third and final reading. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Two in opposition. That concludes this evening's adjournment. Motion to adjourn. Second. I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
The recommendation was made to zero.
That was just the ordinance.
That's the ordinance.
To bring everybody up to the minimum wage?
So should, should we, should one of us ask for reconsideration of the vote?
Yes.
Someone on your winning side, that's you.
Will we reconsider?
Second.
I have a motion and second to reconsider from the favoring side. Councillors, just recall, this requires a two-thirds majority vote. We have one oh two sixteen before us.
Counselor Preston, you know it's your fault for not reading it out.
Of cour, absolutely. My apologies, councillor, this certainly was my fault for not.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and second to approve one oh two, two thousand sixteen. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? We are adjourned. Thanks, councillors.